Now, please welcome our candidates, but before they start, we'll let you know that they are seated in the order in which they will appear on the ballot. So that's a picture to have in your head as we move forward. So we'll start with Mr. Denny there at the end. Go ahead, you have one minute to introduce yourself to folks.
Good evening. Just thank you for the sponsors this evening. My name is Jason Denny. I live in the southernmost point of the district, south of Slaughter. I've lived there since 2009 and currently serve as the watch commander for my neighborhood. And then also I work for the Texas General Land Office, serving the veterans of the state of Texas as a veterans advocate and ensuring that the benefits that are due to the veteran, that they ensure that those are given to them. Some of the platform items that I'm running on is accountability, transparency, and fiscally responsibility regarding the budget that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Floyd.
Hi. I'm Dave Floyd. I'm running here in District 5. I'm a lawyer, business owner, business consultant. I grew up in Barton Hills, went to Austin High School, went to University of Texas at Austin, and came back here after law school and started working as an attorney and then in the insurance business. Now as an attorney and working with a tech startup here in town. I've been very involved in community organizations such as Young Men's Business League, Austin Young Chamber, Habitat for Humanities, Young Professionals Program, the Austin Young Lawyers Association. And I've been very passionate about getting younger people motivated to get involved with community service and philanthropy. Same with the arts. I was involved with the Long Center and a group called the Creative Fund I helped found. I love getting people excited about civic issues and involved, and I hope to bring that passion here to the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez.
Right. I'm Mike Rodriguez. I had a 26-year career in the Air Force, finished at the rank of Colonel. During the time I was in the Air Force, I flew fighters, flew in combat, commanded a fighter unit in Germany. And I also served at National Headquarters directing fighter training across the United States with a $1.1 billion budget. And ultimately spent three years at the U.S. Embassy in Germany as advisor to the ambassador. After I got back here to Austin, I was able, of course, to pick where I wanted to live. And I think Austin was one of the most beautiful cities to come to, so I'm certainly interested in keeping it that way. During the time I've been here, in addition to spending 10 years as a stockbroker, I also spent time as the president of the South Austin Civic Club. I've commanded the American Legion post in Onion Creek twice, and been involved in numerous community affairs. I look forward to representing the people of South Austin.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen.
Hi, everyone. My name's Anne Kitchen, and I'm also running for District 5. And thank you all to our hosts for having us, and thank you all for being here. So I am running to offer my experience to listen to and to fight for South Austin. You know, at a time when at least nine out of 10 council members are going to be new, I am well-prepared to hit the ground running. I offer my experience to represent you. I've lived in this district for over 20 years, and as a state legislator, I represented South Austin and much of this district. I'm also offering my experience in law, in business, and in the community to tackle the really tough questions, the tough issues in legal and financial issues that the city has. I'm a former Assistant Attorney General. I'm an experienced businessperson, and I have my own business. And I've been a leader in the community. I've been an advocate in healthcare, women's health, the environment, and senior issues. You can trust me to understand and keep my commitments, and you can trust me to listen to you, and you can trust me to find solutions to the tough issues that we're dealing with.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
Hello. I'm Carol Ann Rose Kennedy, and thank you all for having me. I retired from the Internal Revenue Service in 2004, had a great career. It was awesome. But then they got on my last nerve, and I resigned. So for 10 years, I have been writing a book and training myself, homeschooling myself on leadership. My models that I'm using for the leadership goals that I have are the presidents, the position of the presidents, the popes, and the Mother Teresas. So I am very, very excited that Austin, the city of Austin, is developing a new government. I think it's awesome, just absolutely awesome, and it's exciting, and I'm just thrilled to even be on the ballot that there's a possibility I could be part of that team.
And that's your time, Ms. Kennedy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should point out that the clock is right there over by that.
Oh, sorry.
No, not at all. Mr. Senical.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Hi, I'm Dave Senical. I've lived in District 5 for most of the 30 years that I've lived in Austin after graduating from UT. I think the District 5 has a lot of potential. We've got Onion Creek, Zilker, all of South Lamar, and Manchaca Road, and a large portion of South Central Austin. These neighborhoods are a big part of the Austin culture, and we collectively have a lot to contribute. And I go around town, and I see an awful lot of construction, but I don't see a lot of infrastructure update that keeps up with that construction. And when I was going around getting my petition, I had so many people venting about not being heard, feeling like ignored and not being a part of the city. I'm excited about 10-1 because it gives us an opportunity to finally focus on the potential that District 5 and South Austin have. I want to make sure, and I'm committed to making sure that happens, and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buda.
Hi, my name is Dan Buda. I am a small business owner in South Austin and have come off recently working six years at the Capitol. I worked during the last four legislative sessions and several special sessions as both a committee director overseeing our state's emergency preparedness and public safety issues, and finally as a stint as chief of staff for Senator Wendy Davis from the last three legislative sessions. What they gave me the opportunity to do outside of the normal day-to-day tasks of managing a senate office, managing staff, was to get really involved in policymaking for issues across the state, including public education, transportation funding, payday lending reform, environmental issues, and property tax appraisal reform. And I was able to do that at a level in which I was able to work with stakeholders across the state who often didn't agree on anything, but we were able to move forward and build consensus on issues and try to push legislation to benefit people in the state. And that's what I look to bring to City Hall, this new form of government, helping us to finally meet some of our lingering challenges we face for so long in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So what we'll do from going here on out, we'll sort of mix up the order so everybody has a chance to go first or has a chance to go last. I think we'll lead with a question from us. The district that you are running to represent, that's District 5, includes a segment that has traditionally been a very active voice in local politics. Folks here turn out to vote in local elections, so they make it all the way down the ballot when they vote. And when they vote, they tend to vote D. They tend to vote Democratic for the most part. How has all of that, given all of that, how has that played into the way that you think about the race and the election that you're trying to win? We'll start with you, Mr. Floyd.
Yeah, the way that I think about it is that I know that Austin's a Democratic town, and I have been, consider myself a moderate Democrat. But, you know, I think that it's important in a nonpartisan election to also reach out to all kinds of people. So I've, in my blockwalking and my outreach attempts, have worked on hitting Republican voting homes, too, just because I want to get out and really see what the pulse of the community is and work on being a representative for everyone in the district, not just someone of a political party affiliation. But yeah, I do know that is a factor in how people are analyzing these elections.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez.
And this office, of course, is a nonpartisan race, and it's nonpartisan for a reason, and that's that we're looking for the best solutions and not the Democratic solution necessarily. I'll quote John Kennedy. It says, "We're not looking for the Republican solution and let us not seek the Democratic solution. Let us seek the best solution." We have an all-Democratic city council right now, and a lot of people don't think that's working very well for them. So let's leave party out of it at the local level, because honestly, we get up every day, we all drive in the same traffic, we all get either home appraisals or rent bills, we certainly all get utility bills. So if we're worried about the cost of living, we want the people that have the best solutions and not look to what letter follows their name on a ballot. Obviously, it's not on the ballot. So if you happen to vote a straight ticket, then you're going to miss this race entirely. What I would say is let's all pull together. We should have people representing us from all over this city, and we will have after this election. It's going to be an exciting time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen.
As a Democratic state legislator, I represented a district with Republicans and with Democrats, and I worked in a legislature with Republicans and with Democrats. So I know how to work with people across all parties. The responsibility of the city council member is to work for the people in the district, all the people in the district, and to find solutions that work for the district while at the same time figuring out how those solutions can work for the whole city. That's the only thing, that's the only way that we're going to get anything done in our city, is to pull together. And that's the exciting thing about 10-1. It's the opportunity to bring all parts of the city together and to find solutions, and then to work together as a whole, because there are things that will work for all parts of town. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
My philosophy on leadership at any level of government is that I am on all sides, all sides, Republican, Democrat, independent, whatever, because I have observed in my 10 years of training myself that on the major issues that do affect every American, the Democrats can go one way and, you know, expecting like a whole group of people to go the way they do, say like an abortion or whatever, anything like that, something so major that affects us all. I just, I'm colorblind. I'm party-blind, so that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Senical.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm a government employee, and the Hatch Act forbids me from running in any partisan election. So I'm staying with that and also running as an independent. I'm not really going to any side. I am concerned about any group that feels excluded in our government. There have been inconsistencies and missed opportunities in the past, and I want to foster communication and participation among neighborhoods, ethnic, and gender groups. 10-1 is a great step towards uniting Austin. People can feel connected to how their city is run. We can expect better balance, better distribution of efforts, and more participation across the districts. I believe we can make everyone feel a part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buda.
We have a great opportunity in 10-1 in that we look at electing these nonpartisan city council members in geographic districts. We are, we're visiting with voters in our districts and talking to them about what they care about. And what I've heard from people are not Democratic issues, Republican issues, independent issues. They are Austin issues, they are South Austin issues. People want to know how the new city council is going to fix roads and improve bus service and tackle increasing property tax rates, increasing costs of living, finding transportation solutions, and managing our rapid growth. And I think that when we look at who we are going to bring to this new council, it's important to recognize people who have been able to work through people of many different opinions. And I've spent, I mentioned four sessions at the Capitol, working with both Democrats, Republicans, independents, really trying to get consensus and build coalitions to move policy better for the betterment of the people of Texas. And that's what I look to bring to the city council, is a viewpoint of inclusiveness and making sure that everyone can listen and have their input on our challenges.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny.
I would say it's as simple as this, kicking the Republicans to the left and the Democrats to the right, and dealing with the issues that we have on an everyday basis for your neighbor that's the left and the right of you, that you see every day, that you see on the weekends, and asking them on certain issues that matters to them. You know, we've blockwalked, we've talked to neighbors, we all have the same message in regarding the voice of South Austin, it doesn't exist. And that's what I plan on bringing to South Austin, bringing to this city council, is being that voice for the accountability and transparency and being fiscally responsible on the budget. All the above, it's not happening right now, and we need it to happen. And I plan on being that voice for us on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just a reminder to you all here, they're ready to collect your cards anytime you're ready, so stick them up if you've got them. Oh, boy. There we go. Thank you all. Mary, how's it looking over there? How's our stack? Should we ask another one, or should we ask one from the stack?
I can ask one from the audience. What are your thoughts about city parks such as Zilker being closed for long periods of time for profitable entities such as C-3 or ACL and not available to the general public?
We'll start with you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, I've got to say about that, when we have these kind of events that we may make sure they pay their own way, we've had some of them, of course, which turned the entire park to a morass of mud. So make sure that those festivals pay their own way when that happens, and rather than create an expense for the cities. I think we need to find the balance. Obviously, our parks are a real treasure to the people in Austin, and we shouldn't be denied access for extended periods of time. Some of the major festivals, of course, are fixtures that Austinites themselves benefit by, so I'm not saying it's a negative thing that we do that. We just have to beware that we do it too often. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen.
I would echo that we need a balance, because our parks, having access to our parks for the whole community is very important. And then, and when we spend too much of that time for commercial activities or activities that have a price tag to get in, that limits the ability for our whole community to enjoy the park. The other thing is, too, of course, we have to look at the larger for-profit types of activities paying their own way in terms of police and fire EMS, that sort of thing. But I would also say that we have to be very cognizant of the fact that we need parks all over the city. And District 5 needs parks in neighborhoods, because it's very important for people to have access to green space, to open space, right down the street or in their neighborhood where they can take their dog, where they can go with their family. And I think as a community, that's one of the things that we can do with our system is to, you know, with our new system, is to look at the whole district.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
I think Zilker Park is way overrated. I think people are way too dependent on it for their entertainment, and I am perfectly happy within a mile radius of my house, I own a house, within a mile radius of my house, there are probably four, five, six parks that I can get up in the morning and go watch the sunrise and drink coffee at. Matter of fact, I'd rather go there than be in my own backyard. It's just, I think there's really no money that needs to be put into parks, no time. I'm very happy with the number and condition of the parks in South Austin.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Senical.
Okay, thank you. I actually think that the city is doing a pretty good job on balancing this. We're a pretty environmentally conscientious city and community, and I think that some of these events are what makes the quality of life here so good in Austin, and also it draws people to Austin. Now, given that, we do have to have balance on that. We've seen, I have a lot of efforts. They've done a tremendous job at Zilker Park, on that whole soccer field, that recovers very quickly. It brings a lot of people, a lot of prestige, and a lot of money into Austin and helps us. And so I think we have that music capital of the world, and I think we want to keep that. Now, given that, there are some concerns we need to deal with, and I'm sure there'll be questions later on transportation needs, because we need to be able to get there and get out and not have a parking problem like that. I know there's a lot of neighborhoods in the area that need special parking permits. So we just need to be conscientious going forward, but I think we're doing pretty well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buda.
We need to remember that parks are a public good and that they are meant to be enjoyed by the public. They're not, parks in themselves are not a profit-making center for the city or revenue stream. And it is great that we have these events like ACL Fest and other things that happen in parks like Zilker, but we need to, we do need to strike a balance, and we need to look at how these events are being paid for. The city has given a lot of fees, fee waivers and subsidies to these for-profit enterprises that have come in and made a lot of money, providing a lot of entertainment for people, providing economic benefit for the city, providing a tourist destination. We need to make sure that moving forward, we are not giving free money away to for-profit enterprises that are putting on these shows. And also, when we look at our budget-making process, whenever a government runs into budgeting shortfalls, the first things to be cut are parks, libraries, arts, culture. We need to make sure that we continue to fund our parks at an appropriate level to make sure that we all can enjoy them for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Mary, would you mind reading back the question for Mr. Denny?
Absolutely. What are your thoughts about city parks such as Zilker being closed for long periods of time for profitable entities like C-3 and Austin City Limits and not available to the general public?
I think it's a conversation that needs to happen with not only those businesses, but then also providing the park space for the residents, for everyday people that, for example, you take the Auditorium Source that's closed currently for renovation. But, you know, they want to move the dog park all the way down to the other side where it's not utilized. Well, why not keep it open for the residents? That's the reason, one of the reasons why people go down there. That's why I go down there with my dog. So it's the everyday reason that we need to keep it open, for example. And not only that, but the park space needs to be, we need to open up conversation and bring not only a garrison park, but maybe a park-like garrison down into the 1626 and Manchac area where we don't have a city park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd.
Yeah, parks are for the people first. And I think ACL is a lot of fun, and it brings a lot of money to the city, and it injects a lot into our economy. But those who promote ACL and who profit from it should pay their fair share, not just for the days that the festival actually occurs, but also for the days that the park is not available to the public. They should pay for the wear and tear on the park, and they should pay, contribute to the public safety, the increases in public safety officers that are required to make sure that that festival is safe and doesn't bother the neighbors in the adjoining neighborhoods. There is a balance that can be struck. They, the event should, you know, they're having a couple of events a year is one thing, but frequent use of the park for commercial interests, I don't agree. I don't think that's what a public park should be for. And I do think that we should work harder on getting neighborhood parks, bigger and nicer neighborhood parks, extended out throughout the district as the city grows. It only makes sense that we do that.
Thank you, sir. I think we're ready for another one, Mary.
We currently have at-large representation, but with the next election, we are moving toward district representation. If elected, how will you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the city as a whole?
Ms. Kitchen, I believe it's your turn to start.
Well, with my experience representing a district, I've done that. And what you need to do is act as a leader. So what that means is be a leader in listening to and understanding what the problems are in your district and finding solutions, and then taking those solutions to the whole city and working with the other council members to see how that works for the entire city. In other words, not waiting for solutions to come from other quarters, but bringing those solutions and taking ownership and leadership and responsibility for what's happening in your own district and bringing solutions to everyone. That's how, that's how you represent your district and make sure you get solutions for your district that also work for the whole city. And that's the responsibility of the council member, and that's the only way that this new system is going to work. And I think it can work, because, you know, really, we're all better together, and the kinds of problems that we have are similar across the whole city. The solutions may need to be tweaked or changed a bit.
Ms. Kitchen.
But the problems are the same. Sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
I have said this before, and everything I have been doing in District 5 mainly for the past 10 years is benefiting already the city. Every issue I have worked on will benefit the entire city. The only thing unique about District 5 that I can think separates them from the rest of the world is the flooding issue, which I don't see a problem with asking the city to allocate preventive measures for the future floods to us, as opposed to any other district that doesn't have flood problems. But as far as any other issue, which is mostly social issues, homelessness, police brutality, these are beginning of my issues. Is my time up?
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Senical.
Okay, thank you. Well, we do have a very diverse population, and it is going to be a new thing with this 10-1, because our main focus is, of course, going to be in our district, but we also have to focus on the larger city, because one against 10 doesn't win anything. So we're going to have to work together. Now, most of our concerns are actually fairly common. We've got a lot of neighborhood concerns and zoning concerns. You talk to different people in different areas. I think the main thing is that we need to be able to listen to the different groups and see what communities specifically are concerned about, and now they're going to have someone that they can directly talk to. I think they're going to feel a lot more part of the city, because now they have to, instead of like, you know, "I don't know any of these people," now it's, "Oh, this is who represents me." So I think that we can work with these different neighborhoods, we can work within the council to work on our districts, and then Austin as a whole, because we all understand that we need to all be in this together, and that one is not going to win anything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Buda.
It's important to remember that while District 5 has specific concerns, specific to this district, we are, we're sharing concerns with the rest of the city, as mentioned, traffic problems, managing growth, affordability issues, property taxes, water, the list goes on and on. But my experience has given me the ability to work with legislators, with legislative staff, with state agencies on a number of different policy areas that affect different parts of the state. Whether those parts of state are El Paso or Houston or Austin, we've been able to work together on issues and be able to listen to legislators in different parts of the state, but also work towards policy that affects as many Texans in a beneficial way as possible. And I think when you look at the new 10-1 system, it's going to take a level of leadership and knowing that while we're having to fight for District 5 and what we need, we're going to have to work with the other council members, not only to pass policy that benefits District 5, but let those other council members know that we're willing to work together to find consensus for issues affecting the entire city.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny.
Yeah, I would say representation in District 5 is priority one. In listening to the residents, visiting with them, talking with them, that's going to be priority one on any issue, because we're finally going to have a voice in South Austin. For nearly, you know, decades, we've never had representation in South Austin, and that's what 10-1, which I've been for since the day one of the restructure and redesign of 10-1. And I think that's what it's given us, the opportunity to lay that forward and move forward and represent the residents of South Austin.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd.
Yes, single-member districts are long overdue. We should have had this decades ago. But the beauty of this new system and why I have faith in its ability to work is that as a defective council member, you are going to have to balance out the needs of your district and the individual neighborhoods and the civic groups and the individuals that live within it with the city as a whole. Austin is a large city. District 5 is a piece of that puzzle. District 5 goes nowhere and can't really function on its own. The health of Austin as a whole directly affects the health of District 5. The great part, so you have to work together with other council members and for common solutions that are good for all of the city in order for District 5 to be healthy. But the great part about a single-member district system is direct representation. People in the neighborhoods, people in the district will now have a point person they can contact. I'm hoping it leads to more responsive government and really a lot more representation for the folks in South Austin.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez.
For 60 years, this city selected their entire city council at large. In fact, in the last two decades, we're the only city in the top 20 in America that selected our city council at large. This is going to be a radical break. It's called representative democracy. In the 19 years I've been in Austin, it didn't take me too long to figure out that if you were unhappy with what's going on in city government, there was not a lot you could do about it if you lived in South Austin. The truth of the matter is that it's your seat, and so I worked for 10-1. I was part of Austinites for Geographic Representation. I firmly believe that representative democracy is the way that the United States government is run, that, I'm talking about government in America. So when we talk about the city council, it is really about us having a voice at the table, a seat at the table. It doesn't mean we wouldn't all work together. I think we're going to find that as a city, we have an awful lot of things in common. As soon as you get people outside of the core district of Austin, where we live, we have a lot of things in common.
Thank you, sir. What's next, Mary?
Well, we received two questions via Twitter.
Well, we received two questions via Twitter regarding Prop One, the urban rail project. Do you support urban rail? And what should Austin do to improve our transit system? And obviously specifically in your district as well.
Ms. Kennedy, it's your turn to start.
Okay. I sold my truck nine years ago by choice, and I've been taking public transportation and walking ever since. I think Capitol Metro, the bus system is perfect. I see no rooms for improvement whatsoever. It's very dependable, cheap, clean, safe, and entertaining. Very entertaining. It's really enhanced my life. The rail system, maybe for the future, but I'd like to see the buses overcrowded before we go that route. I can't see wasting any money on rail at this point. We could utilize the existing rails. I would go for that. But otherwise, no rail right now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Senegal?
I want a mass transit system that facilitates people not having to drive into town. I want to have alternatives for commuting to work and entertainment, and I want access to the airport. I want to achieve a goal of affordable transportation that puts less cars on the road, increases the safety, less pollution, and a better balance to our quality of life. And I think the Proposition One doesn't do any of that. Let's explore instead, using like the Union, one thing to explore is the Union Pacific Network. They have not just the active line, but also railroad of way and abandoned rail. I do think the future is going to have rail in Austin, and we can take a step in that direction. The Union Pacific Network can be made available. It includes right-of-ways to outline communities and the airport, and it will cost money, but I think that's a better investment in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buda?
I do not support Prop One. I think at a time in which we are dealing with problems with affordability in this city, the last thing we want to do is tack on a significant chunk of tax to people's, a property tax role. I'd like to see us improve our, our Capitol Metro bus system by both increasing the, the number of buses, increasing the routes, adding more frequency, trying to find some ways to get a little more accountability in when the, when the buses show up. You know, Metro, Capitol Metro just unveiled their new 803 bus route, Metro Rapid that goes down south Lamar, and it stops at, at Ben White and, and Westgate. Any further down than that, you have a significant drop-off in bus service in this district. And, you know, we, we do have a stigma in the city against using mass transit. You go to other major cities, that, that's not the case. But we need to find ways to incent people to want to use mass transit. And part of that is actually giving them, giving them access to the bus service in the first place by providing more routes, providing a further reach and providing more bus stops. And that's what I'd like to see done, as well as other things like, like legalizing Uber and Lyft to find a way to add more, more capacity without increasing more cars on the road.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny?
Mary, it's, it's, I'm glad that you brought that up. Just, just an example is that there's, there's been some confusion about where some of my opponents stand on rail. I've been consistent about where I've, I've stood on rail. And, and because it doesn't serve the best interests of South Austin, only helps the downtown insiders and special interests. In fact, last week, I called on my fellow candidates to join me in pledging opposing Proposition One. I actually have copies of that pledge with me tonight for my opponents to sign, and I'll be happy to serve as their witness here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, I'm against Prop One. I'm not against the concept of urban rail per se, but I don't think that Prop One is the right plan. It's, we know it's not the right time, it's not the right plan, and it's not providing the service that, you know, that it's advertised, which is getting, helping with congestion on I-35. And in addition to that, MOPAC and our local streets that absorb some of the traffic coming up from Hays County and coming out of Williamson County. What we need to look at is something along the lines of the Lone Star Rail Plan. That's a commuter and regional rail plan that would give folks the option, once completed, of coming in from suburban areas, actually affording having to use I-35, going straight into downtown or different business centers like the Arboretum area and Domain area. In addition to that, buses and bus rapid transit downtown could supplement that kind of system and we, and would make a lot of sense. So there's a, that's a much better way to approach rail than Prop One.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez?
I don't think this is a close call. I oppose Proposition One. It goes from nowhere to a failed mall, and the city intends to use it to try to shape future growth, not because transportation needs are being served. In fact, it doesn't take any cars off the roads that you care about, the ones that are most congested. It would serve four-tenths at, at its peak. And using the city numbers, it would take four-tenths, serve four-tenths of 1% of the people when 97% of us go by road every day. So that's a waste of money. In fact, it is not a rail system at all, as you normally think about a rail system. It's a streetcar system with an electric grid that will displace cars from the roads it goes on because the grooves go in the pavement and take away car lanes. So I don't think this is a close call. There is rail that's sufficient, and that would be rail that goes between cities or goes to the far-out suburbs where it doesn't stop at the same place cars do. But this, this particular streetcar system wouldn't even get up ahead of steam before it was stopping again. So I don't think that's a close call. What we should be doing, in fact, the areas that that plan to serve are adequately served right now by buses. We should be increasing our, increasing our bus grid.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen?
I do not support Prop One. I see rail in our future, but this proposal costs too much at a time that we're concerned about affordability, and it doesn't get at the problems that we have in District Five. I think that we need to pay attention to more immediate, lower-cost solutions for the problems that we have in traffic, particularly in District Five. We need to, you know, there is no, there is no one fix for transportation. We need to build a well-connected system that includes roads, that includes buses, that looks at things like options for people to work from home or work for different hours, that does things, that looks at the, the flow of traffic on roads. Basically, we need to look at the options that are available to people, and we need to, we need to look at more immediate, lower-cost solutions. That's what we need right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary, what's next?
This question comes from the audience. Fixed income and soon, soon-to-be-retired residents who own their homes are concerned about property taxes pricing them out of their homes. How would you address this challenge?
Mr. Senegal, it's your turn.
Okay, this is for affordability. And I think a good starting point for the city is we need to evaluate all property, residential and commercial, at a fair market value. The council needs to, in addition to that, need to use federal, state, and local funds to try to make affordable housing attractive to developers and builders. The council can review density rules. One option on that is to explore pervious concrete to try to decrease the impact of high-density development. And, and of course, when you talk about affordability of transportation, it again comes back into it, because that is a big cost that we have. And that ties, ties into that we need options for moving people around. We cannot create jobs just by ourselves. Companies have to come in there. So we need to have transportation and housing options so that work, workers can get to their businesses and businesses can get to their, I'm sorry, and work, and, ah, workers can get to the workplace and businesses can get to their workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buda?
I, I support a 20% homestead exemption phased in over an appropriate number of years to make sure we don't hit too much of a snag with our city's budget. I also think that we need to look at the city budget itself and go through the, a better process of reviewing our city departments and the funding we, we put towards programs and staffing levels to make sure that we're not continuing on programs that have been in existence for a long time that are just, just no longer relevant or no longer working. I also think we need to look at how we are appraising property. Last session, I, I worked on a piece of legislation for Senator Davis that actually would have sought to fix a lot of the problems we have with the disparity between residential and commercial appraisals by disallowing some of the comparable properties that people are able to use when they come and fight their tax rolls. It, it doesn't do much good to use a comparable property in Wichita Falls to a, a high-rise down on Austin to argue that their, your property tax should be lower. But that's, that's what happens legally under the law. I was disappointed to see the city and county both kick the can down the road and not challenging the voter, or the, the appraisal rolls this year. I think that instead of looking at a study, we need to actually try to fix the problem.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny?
Well, I, I would echo Dan on that, and ju, just on the point where, where we, where we need to look at it. You know, from what the appraisals that's, that come in, you know, the citizens, you know, we're, we're the ones that pay the taxes. And, and that alone there for hav, having a voice and, and representation, it's, it comes on the affordability where the, the options that we have just from the average citizen that's coming in to the local heroes that we have on, on the fire police and EMS, where the, the gentlemen and women that are protecting us, they can't even live in our own city, let alone, you know, they're serving us, but they can't live because of the affordability. So that alone needs to be looked at. And, and not only looking at it and reading it, but we need to act on it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, this issue is actually very personal to me. My parents are both semi-retired and they have a house in Barton Hills. And that house has gone up several multiples of what they paid for it back in 1989. And so I've had this talk a lot with them. I think we can start out looking at the phased-in homestead exemption. That's an immediate action that the city can take. If there's, if people are worried about a loss of revenue, there's always a cap you could put in it to say, okay, you'll only take a certain percentage up to, you know, $500,000 worth of value, for exam, for instance, so you don't hurt the budget too much. But generally, going back to the budget, that's another way to control taxes here, to keep the absolute amount of taxes you pay down, is fiscal responsibility, efficiency in, at the city level, in the city government, and being sure that your expenditures are kept in check. Because high, high expenses demand high amounts of tax revenue, and that leaks back over to the taxpayers.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez?
Would you repeat the question, please? The answers have been different enough. I want to get this right.
Absolutely. Fixed income and soon-to-be-retired residents who own their homes are concerned about property taxes pricing them out of their homes. How would you address this challenge?
Well, this is a direct problem for South Austin, and that is that people, over the last decade, have seen their property taxes go up 40%, while incomes have gone up an average of 9.5%. Rents are up 60%, and the cost of new homes are up 70%. I think the short answer is that we need to stop raising the spending because that goes straight to taxes. And then the second part of that is I do support a property, a homestead exemption that is for the city, similar to what the county does. So what we have to do is concern ourselves anytime we think we have a good new idea with can the people afford it? Because it's certainly not a good idea if the people cannot afford it. You can't keep raising the taxes and putting taxes and fees into your utility bills without having people push back at some point and say, stop. It can't be over 10% on a local tax, which is, if you look at the average household income and the average of your property taxes, it's approaching 10% or exceeding it for some people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen?
Well, property, property taxes are ground zero for affordability issues. You know, particularly for folks that are retired or on a fixed income. So that's where we're seeing all the concerns for affordability. So I've been involved with Austinites for Fair Taxes, which is a local group that's working on solutions. What we have to do is we have to be cognizant of what has to happen at a state level and what we can do locally. So we need to include in our legislative agenda what needs to happen at a state level. But locally, we could never wait on the legislature. We need to do what we can locally. That means homestead exemption. That means looking at fair appraisals between residential and commercial. That means transparency. So it's apparent to everyone across all of our taxing bodies what the impact is. And that also means coordination with all of our taxing bodies so that we know what we're doing, so we don't just hit the people in the public with this, and then this, and then this.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy?
In South Austin and the entire city, the, the entire nation, there are many, many, many people who own, who bought big houses to raise their families in. They had maybe two incomes at the time they bought the house. And now the kids are gone, and they're living in this huge house all by themselves. Their spouses die or leave, and they're in this, this huge house all by themselves. And it, and with their fixed income, retirement income, it's, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming. So my suggestion is to, for the city to allow people in those situations to transform their, convert their big houses into multiple living units, rooms to rent or, and/or private entrance apartments.
Thank you, ma'am. That's your time. Mary, do you mind if I butt in here with a quick question?
Absolutely not.
We all just talked about the homestead exemption. One of the, some estimates from the city put the number of, or the, the figure for lost revenue of 35 or 36 million dollars. I imagine that for some of you up here, the, the answer to that question would be, don't replace it. But for those of you who would like to replace it, what would you do, how would you replace the money? And I think it's your turn to start. Mr. Buda?
Well, it's, it's important, I think, in, in looking at a, a homestead exemption, that we phase it in over an appropriate number of years to lessen the impact on the budget. I think that, you know, as we look forward at the new council, looking at it, our city's budget, we have a, a budget now, the 3.5 billion dollar budget that, that's recently passed, that is larger than the budgets of either San Antonio or Dallas. Looking at the size of those cities and looking at the size of ours, while we are continuing, continuing to grow, and we will for some time, there's, there has to be something in our city budget that, that is, can be reduced, can be gotten rid of. There are programs that have probably been along, ran along for a long time that we can, we can do away with. And we can look at our, our city's departments and, and review, do a thorough review of our city departments, the water, utility, Austin Energy, and see where we can find some extra money. One of the things I like, you know, one of the few things I like that the legislature does is the, the sunset review process, which reviews state agencies on a rotating schedule every six to 12 years. And I think it's time for this new council, it's both a way to learn about the budget. We should implement a system like that for the city departments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny? It's your turn.
All right. I thought we were going to go in order, so I wasn't ready for that. But I'll answer. I, I would say it just, it comes down to just budgeting, just in general, just a average, regular guy, what I do in my household. The wife and I, we sit down and we talk. We have a budget. We have a budget meeting. That's not happening at City Hall. That is something that I will bring to City Hall for fiscal responsibility, that something that, that we don't have currently, that, that the dialogue with their citizens, there is no input. And for an example, just was what preluded to, to the utility districts, where we have either one, you pick Austin, you know, water, or you pick Austin Energy. It doesn't matter. Either one, there's excessive spending. So we definitely need to look at that and how we're spending that money. For example, we take an excess amount of multimillion dollars and we, and we say, oh, well, let's build a building. No, let's zoom in and let's look at that money and how we're spending it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, I agree that we should take a phased-in approach to, to ease the, ease the transition. But, I mean, looking at the way the budget changes over the years or a, as it, as it increases, as when the new council comes on, yeah, I think that coming back and a sunset-like program from the city auditor's office would be great. Looking at wastefulness in the city, city administrative, in the organizational structure, looking at waste, you know, trying to assess out wasteful programs, making sure that we aren't spending too much money with public works projects, for instance, that are done poorly and need to be fixed. There's out there, we have a great opportunity right now to really come in and do a thorough examination, open up the city government, do a thorough examination, and see where we're spending our money properly, and then to move ahead with a little more fiscal discipline in the future.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez?
I think the way that you characterized the cost of a homestead exemption is, is kind of a quaint way of looking at things, because when you say that it would lose $35 million in revenue, it assumes that the revenue is the government's to begin with. In point of fact, we had, and I think most of you in the audience that own homes have property appraisals. And my property appraisal was up 10.3% this year. So the city, in their infinite wisdom, decided to, let's roll back the mill levy rate slightly to make about 1.7 to 2%, leaving them with, guess what, 8% over what they had the previous year. So the answer is the 35 million is somewhere in that 8% pretty easily. In fact, 10 years ago, back in 2003, the general fund of the city's budget was 440 million. Next year, it will be 850 million. That rate- That rate of increase cannot be sustained by the citizens of this country, of this city. So I think $35 million, we can get it easily. They spent $27 million on the boardwalk, and they spent $30 million, or planning to spend $30 million for the property out there by Bull Creek.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen.
I would say that, yes, we need to, in terms of the homestead exemption, we need to look in terms of phasing it in. We don't want to put a homestead exemption in place and then turn around and cut services to lower-income folks, because then we'd just increase the regressiveness of it. So we don't want to do that. But what we need to do, I think, as a new council, one of the first things the new council needs to do is look at the budget as a whole, look at priorities, and make sure we're aligned with priorities. For example, our incentives, I think, need to be revamped, and incentives and waivers and those kinds of things, I think are areas in which we may be losing revenue or spending money where we don't need to. The other thing that would be very interesting for our city to do, and a lot of cities don't do, and that is to really look at what can our citizens bear in terms of affordability? Like, if you were in a business, you would see what the price point is. So what can people afford before you're pushing them out? We need to know what that is.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
The $3.5 billion budget that Austin has is downright scary. It's like, we are pulling in all this money from around the world, all year long. What are we doing with that money? What are we doing with it? How about giving, stop charging us property taxes, or minimize it, and pump that money into a long-term investment? Our houses that we own is an investment, not only for ourselves and our families, but for the whole city. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Senegal.
Okay, thank you. Now, I know it's very popular to think that we have all this extra money laying around, but we've actually got a pretty fairly well-run city here. The problem is that the state does not allow us to deduct a dollar figure. We must use a percentage. And the amount what they're talking about here, this 20%, that also applies to people who have $10 and $20 million homes. If they're residences, I think you'd have a hard time denying them these exemptions. So I think the best way to try to look at this affordability is, again, to evaluate properties fairly, both residential and commercial, and make all that information, like sales information for commercial properties, available. What that will do is, that will increase the overall, that right now is being artificially lowered on commercial end. And if we bring all that in, that brings the entire value of Travis County property up, and that will allow us to put in a smaller exemption, plus also lower our tax rate.
Thank you, sir. Mary, what's next?
This question comes from Twitter. What are your thoughts on the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan?
Oh, boy. Mr. Denny.
All right. Well, I'd say that, you know, that we need a plan, but not this plan. You know, I definitely would say that, you know, there's, you know, there's two sides to this, you know? Some oppose it, some are for it. But I would say, just in general, that we need a plan, but not just this plan.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd.
Yeah, from what I've studied about the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan, it was good that it didn't get passed. Part of the problem is, when you've got the revisions coming up, like Code Next, you're about to come in and do this whole, like a different type of, basically look at the rules all over again. It makes sense just to wait and figure out if you're going to be consistent, and if you're going to start causing problems in a neighborhood that might be better addressed by a different, by a different system. Also, I mean, I went and watched the testimony for that, when they were talking, you know, for and against it, and the impression I got was, a lot of neighbors, a lot of people from the neighborhood really felt left out. They felt like the plan had been foisted upon them. They were surprised by the provisions. They were surprised that, you know, there were going to be, like, houses on street corners that could become little firms and shops and things like that. And there was just a lot of citizen anger, and I think in the future, we need to be a little more responsive and transparent with the citizens about stuff like that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez.
Has anyone here ever tried to get a speed bump on their street? It's not easy. You have to get 50% of your neighbors to agree, and of course, it has to meet certain criteria. Now, this is a much heavier issue. The South Austin Combined Neighborhoods Plan allows to, plans to allow infill on your street with lots as small as 5,700 square feet. Now, they have a quaint term for that infill, they'll be accessory dwellings. But what I'm here to tell you is that if you put an apartment on somebody's driveway, it's going to cause, on that street and several others on your street have that, you're going to have additional cars, you're going to have a different kind of neighbors than you had before. So it will change the character of your neighborhood. So I don't take a position on the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan, except to say this. Democracy means it's your neighborhood, not the city council's neighborhood. You should get a vote, they should have a referendum.
Thank you, sir.
By neighborhood.
Ms. Kitchen.
I would say that neighborhood plans can be an important tool for neighborhoods, and neighborhood plans need to be respected by the city, and any changes that we have in the future through Code Next, Code Next has to respect neighborhood plans and not override them. With regard to, with regard to this plan, I agree. It's for the neighbors in this neighborhood, in these neighborhoods, these combined neighborhoods to decide. And I think that the city has made some progress, my understanding is, the city has made some progress, but the way in which they began was probably not as open in terms of the input process, but I understand that progress has been made. It's my hope that these neighborhoods will be able to come to some consensus on what they want in the neighborhood, and if that occurs, then I'd like to see it go forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
I apologize. I really, truly do not understand the question. Can you repeat the question, please, maybe in different words?
I think you might not be alone in that sentiment.
What are your thoughts on the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan?
Okay, so there's an official South Austin Neighborhood Plan in place?
Yes. It is going to be revisited by council soon.
Okay, okay. I'll just pass on that, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senegal.
Okay, we have very diverse neighborhoods, and a lot of them have the feeling that they don't really have any input in some of these plans. Now, what I'm concerned about is that they're trying to increase the density, but our infrastructure is already strained. And I think we should bring the infrastructure up to date first. We want, we do want to listen to these different neighborhoods, and I think I would like to let them have the ability to decide for amongst themselves what their neighborhood wants to look like, because what I really want is, I want these neighbors to feel like they have ownership of where they live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buddha.
I would start out by agreeing with Dave. I think that we do need to look at making sure our infrastructure is sound before we start overdensifying our neighborhoods. I happen to live across the street from the border of the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan area, and I've been talking with neighborhood leaders and people in the community. There are some concerns over the infill options, and what's that going to do to the neighborhood? My big concerns come from two things. One is that, if you don't know, in the proposal for the Combined Neighborhood Plan, what would happen if it passes, it would remove the ability for you to get notified of zoning changes near you. A lot of neighbors are concerned about that. I am, too. We had the zoning going right next door to where I live, and we've been getting our notices, and people have been attending zoning hearings, things like that. So it's important to me to maintain that notification. The other problem I have is just the overall process. We are dealing with accessory dwelling unit proposal, going through city council right now. We're dealing with Code Next process, land development code rewrite, and we're going to deal with this Combined Neighborhood Plan. I think there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences by all three of these things moving at the same time. That's where my concerns lie.
Thank you, sir. What's next, Mary?
You know, if we could ask maybe a broader question, what do you see as the biggest issue confronting District 5, and how would you address it if elected?
Mr. Floyd.
I would have to say that the biggest issue, well, it's a combination of transit and affordability. Like, that's how most people would describe it. But really, it's the effects of the high growth and high-growth rate in Austin. And it's how we manage the growth, how we plan for it, are we going to be smart about how we bring additional people into the city? And so when you look at the transit side of it, you say, okay, are we going to have adequate road infrastructure, or are we going to have adequate public transit? Are we going to work to activate those rail lines that go through the city and use them for commuter rail, getting people off of local streets like Brody and Manchak, and easing up on South Lamar? And then you look at issues with rapid growth, like you look at planning on South Lamar, and you say, okay, you've got a lot of developments being put in, but what can the city do to plan better so that you aren't overloading the infrastructure all at once, and really having negative effects when you should be reaping positive benefits from the new amenities that are going in?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez.
I would use the broader category of responsive government. We could take a poll right here. Here's a good cross-section of South Austin. Are you more concerned about transit, or are you concerned about the cost of your taxes and your utilities? And what I hear people saying are all those things, but responsive government is, boy, we'd like to have a voice before they raise our taxes again. Boy, we'd like to have a voice on what's going on with transportation. How could we do this for 20 years and be in this fix when we could see this train coming, as it were? So responsive government wins. We should have a seat at the table to make sure that that person that you send up there is addressing those issues on your behalf. If you're concerned about crime in your neighborhood, that's the highest issue. If you're concerned about getting out of your street in the morning onto Manchak or the access road I-35, then that's your local issue. The way that can be addressed, though, is by having a true representation from South Austin, somebody who will come down and talk to you and make sure your issues get addressed at the local government level.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen.
I think, I think the first thing that the council has to do is to fix how the council works, and how the city government works. Because if we don't do that, nothing will happen. We won't be able to work for our district, and we won't be able to make change. And so what that means is, all the way from responsiveness and how the council operates, in other words, so we don't have meetings at 3:00 in the morning, so that there are ways for people to actually have input, all the way from that to perhaps a bigger and tougher issue, which is how our city staff works with the public. We have a problem, and I think that that goes back to management. And I think that one of the first things that the council members have to do is sit down with the city manager and say, these are the things that need to change. We don't have customer service in our community, and so we need to hold the manager accountable for how that's going to change.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
From my observations with the city council and the investigations I've done into what people need and want in District 5 mainly, I find that way too many people run, they go, oh, well, I elected that person, they ought to do something about it. And I have found that there's just a bunch of whiny, heiny people running to city council expecting them to do stuff that, if it's important to them, then they need to organize the people in their neighborhood or community who also feel the same way, and everybody put their time and effort into it and fix the problem themselves. And if they have any snags, then go ask mommy and daddy what to do. So I can't, I can't pinpoint one specific thing about District 5. There's at least 10 that I'm passionate about, and I've been putting time and effort into. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's your time. Mr. Senegal.
Okay, in District 5, and I've heard a lot about this, because as I was going around my petition stuff, so many people were venting, and again, it comes back to, they feel ignored, no one's listening to me, if I have a concern, I don't see any response. And you kind of see that when you're going into, around our area. It seems like if there are concerns or problems with something that's going on in South Austin, at least in the past, it just wasn't brought up, because we just weren't represented. You see all the construction going on on Barton Springs and on South Lamar, thousands of new residents that aren't there yet, but once they get there, they don't have the infrastructure updated. So I think a big concern in District 5 is the parking and traffic density and the zoning enforcement. And, you know, we've got neighborhoods that require parking stickers because they're having so much problem, because part of District 5, we border a lot of entertainment venues. So I think that, and just getting more involved in the city, I think it's going to be a good, good positive, that they'll feel like they're heard finally.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buddha.
I'm going to be echoing some of my colleagues here have said, but talking to voters across this district, whether knocking on their doors or calling them at home, people have been shocked that a city council candidate calls them and asks them what they think and what they care about. And that goes from, that goes from Barton Hills down to Onion Creek, everything in between. There is a big feeling of people in this district, especially the further south you get, that the, there's just a feeling of dejection, that the city council doesn't even know that we exist south of Ben White. And that's something that can be fixed, in part by moving to 10-1, by having people elected through geographic region, but in part by recognizing that people feel this way, people feel that their voices aren't heard. Going back to talking about the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan, you know, people recognizing that the city wanted to do with notification requirements for zoning changes, looking at the problems we've had with the massive development in the South Lamar neighborhood, which the city is now using as a case study of how not to grow in the future. These are all things that concern me, concern the people I've been talking to, and I'll wrap up there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny.
I would say the biggest issue in District 5 is transportation options. For bringing, just recently, we've got going on with Uber and Lyft, and transporting our, maybe our residents or just people that would enjoy to have, go down to the entertainment districts, and transporting them safely. You know, it would be good to have public transportation south of Slaughter. We don't have that. They did construction along Manchak to widen the roads to add a turn lane, but there's no bus lane. There's no transportation south of Slaughter for public transportation, so I can't get out of my house, walk a block, and get on public transportation, and go down Manchak, and go down South Lamar to work. So I would say transportation options is the big problem, and hopefully, that will leave some of the congestion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mind if I ask another, Mary?
Sure, go ahead.
As you all know, the city has two major public utilities. What, how would you describe the most appropriate relationship between the City of Austin and those two utilities? And I believe, Mr. Rodriguez, is it your turn to start?
I'd be glad to. First of all, owning a public utility, you would think would be like having a co-op that would be done for the good of the citizens in this town. In point of fact, though, they're using these two public utilities as a piggy bank, and would therefore be very reluctant to give it up. The city probably, you know, takes 9.1% of Austin Energy's revenues in what they call a transfer fee, and they take 8.2% of the water. And then, of course, both of those utilities in the last two or three years have claimed, we're running out of money. And the city, rather than relenting on any of that, because they put that under the general fund, has said, well, we need to raise the rates then. Now, I know that corporate, corporations, when they come in and provide it for you in a commercial sense and compete it, they pay a stockholder dividend also, but it doesn't approach 9.1%. I promise you that. So one of the things that would keep your fees down is to actually roll back that transfer rate.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitchen.
The city needs to maintain control of the utilities. There was an effort previously to consider spinning off, and I don't think that's appropriate because you don't have the accountability of the public when you do that. I would say with both energy and water, the city council should play a leadership role. We have the advantage of two task force reports that provide some opportunities and some direction in terms of the leadership we can take in our city, and we need to implement those. For example, the water task force talked in terms of conservation, and improving the advances we've already made in our city on conservation, but to take that to the next level. So that's an example of the kinds of things that the city council needs to take leadership on, in continuing to have oversight and control and policy direction to these utilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
I'd like to talk about water only. Let the record show that I have a solid seven-year history of when I'm home alone, in, living alone at my house, all I need is 2,000 gallons. alone at my house, all I need is 2,000 gallons of water a month. I think the policing of water restrictions is ridiculous, spending money policing us, making, making us lose our front yard, dried grass and plants and everything. Well, nobody can police us, nobody has a clue what's going on inside our houses. Nobody has a clue what's going on in our backyard. It's futile. The policing of it is ridiculous. I suggest that the City of Austin give every, every household a minimum amount of free water, the first 2,000 gallons, the first 4,000 gallons, whatever, and then make up for that loss by increasing the rates, the tier.
And that's your time.
Adjust the tier.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Senegal.
Okay, we're actually in a pretty good situation here because our water and electric utility, we own them, so they are investments for us. Now, I know it's very easy to say that, well, we can just kind of not put money into the, into the city from them, but then you have to get that money from somewhere else. Again, we don't have a lot of waste. I mean, people are fairly conscientious about this kind of stuff. Now, I'd like to not, not to put, let emotion dictate what we do. I'd like to, I'd like to, instead of having like firm mandates, I'd like to set performance goals for our utilities, because we have excellent staff on both utilities that are skilled and trained, and let's, let them innovate to reach those performance goals. In addition to that, we can look at ways that we can decrease our usage on there, incentives for solar power and rain collection. We can kind of put something like that in together. We can also look at the water utility and look at water capture, like they do in Wichita Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buddha.
As I mentioned before, looking at a kind of a review process for city departments, I think that the water utility and Austin Energy need to go through the same process. In fact, I think both of them probably need to have an independent audit done. My understanding is Austin Energy has never actually gone through an audit like this, and I think it's time to take a closer look at that, especially as the new council is learning more about the utilities and how to manage that as, as the managing board of the utilities. We need to continue efforts at constant serving water, but we can't do that under a business model that increases our water rates for using less water. We need to look at the transfers of money from, from the utilities to the city's general fund and recognize that they're, in fact, a hidden fee, a hidden tax on, on utility users, and that's, that's something that probably shouldn't continue. I'd be concerned about how that's going to affect the city's budget overall, but I think, as I said before, looking at, reviewing the budget, reviewing our city departments, I think we can probably find, find money to make up for that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny.
I think it just comes down to being fiscally responsible and how we, we look at our budget, you know, to echo the, the other opponents in this issue. I would, I would definitely say that, that the, you know, just on the plain purpose of when the Austin Water, you know, they're in business to sell us water, and then they, they go and they ask us to conserve on water, and then they turn around and raise our rate. That right there, that's nonsense. And so to look at that, to exactly what Dan just said, to do an audit, to call them out on it and say, we need to see it. Where are you spending the money? How are you spending the money? And no, we're not going to build you a new building. How are you spending your money? Let's look at that money that you're earning off of us that we're giving you, because that's what you're in business to do for us, is give us our water. So I'd say fiscally responsibility and looking at that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd.
Yeah, I think the city, the people of Austin have some values that include sustainable, respect for sustainable energy, clean energy, long-term water conservation, planning, and affordability for our low-income residents. And we really have a great opportunity owning our two utilities in order to pursue these policy goals. You think of the city council, kind of like the board of directors of a publicly traded company, they can take our values as citizens and then work, work them into the way that both these utilities operate. You know, if you were to look at a privately held utility, for instance, the efforts we've made with solar and renewables and then distributed solar, which means putting it out on rooftops and then adding the power back into the grid, and projects like the Pecan Street project over in Mueller, I don't think that would have happened if we didn't own our utilities. And there's also water reuse planning, like the Purple Pipe and things like that, that we are able to do because we own the water utility. So it really is an opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Mary, we got anything else from, from the audience or from Twitter?
Well, here's a question. Some citizens in the district are still dealing with the impact of last year's Onion Creek flooding, and were disappointed by the city's slow response time. How will you ensure the city responds in a timely manner if flooding occurs again? And how will you tackle emergency preparedness?
Ms. Kitchen.
The flooding issues we need to address, well, first off, we've got flooding all over the city and all over this district, in Onion Creek and Williamson Creek, South Lamar area. And so we need to look at two ends of this. We need to look at both the way in which we react and the way in which we prevent. So the way in which we react, we need to make improvements, and there's been a lot of suggestions about how we can do that in terms of better, better predicting the potential for floods and better reacting when this occurs. But the name of the game is prevention. So we need to work with our, with regard to Onion Creek, for example, we need to work with Hayes County, we need to work on the development that's coming upstream, and we need to work on ways that we can prevent the kinds of flooding that we saw. So that's very important, and there's a lot more we need to do, but I've run out of time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy.
I believe that most of our focus regarding the flooding in South Austin, well, District Five, needs to be focused on future, future flooding damage instead of, in any, in any new developments that are built to, to have that into place, the flood control. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Senegal.
Well, actually, I think the response that was, that we had, like Onion Creek, and again, we've had other floodings as well, was pretty deplorable. It took a long time to have any kind of activity. They just, they just were completely unprepared, and I think this kind of goes back to an example of South Austin sort of being off the radar. I think most of us have probably never seen a current council member or a past council member in your neighborhood, and I think only when we have a disaster, then they finally come down and say, oh, gee, there's Austin down here. So I think that what we need to do is, and I think 10-1 is going to help us with that, is because now there's going to be, there's five council districts that are all apart in South Austin, and that's half the council is going to be making, saying like, well, wait a second, you know, I don't want people in my neighborhood, in Onion Creek, calling me and saying like, you know, where is everybody? I'm going to be upfront and be proactive and get those activities in.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buddha.
I have two specific concerns regarding what happened with the Onion Creek floods, both of them after the fact. One was the after-action report that came out, just detailing what, what went well, what, what went okay, what didn't work. When you do an after-action report, what you need to put in there are measurables and follow-up to make sure that you are actually addressing the things that did not go well and that need to be fixed. This after-action report had none of that. It's, it's a great document to look at. You can see what, what they thought went well and not, but there's no, there's no follow-up in there for fixing this problem in the future. The other specific concern I have is that the, our city's emergency management coordinator, who is paid solely to deal with situations like this, did not open up the emergency management office for hours after the flooding started until the next morning and for, and not until days after we had warnings that this was a possibility. This is someone whose sole job is to open the office in a timely manner, be prepared, have his staff prepared to deal with this, these emergency issues, and that simply just didn't happen, and that's, that's, it's a shame.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny.
Well, I would say that in, just in reaction, just being on-call, just, just having that, that open government, that transparency that, again, we don't have on city council. You know, when somebody, you know, for example, as, you know, in the Marine Corps, when, when another Marine calls out for you, you respond, you reply. So it's the same thing with, just like the resident, you know, you call, you elect me, you call on me for the accountability. That's the way it works, and that didn't happen. We had one council member that came out to the Onion Creek. That's on-call for, you know, and then, and then there's a big push for, for funding, for federal funding, but none of the, the response was done at a, at a current staff level, where that's what he gets paid to do, and he didn't come out. And so if it takes me coming out and responding to it, that's what I will do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Floyd.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't take a disaster to get the attention of the city, whether that's having them come down to help deal with the remedial efforts after the disaster or to put them on their planning radar. Really what this comes down to is being a lot more proactive and conscientious about areas around the city, not just in the urban core, but around the entire perimeter of Austin. We know, we've known for years, we've known since the 90s about some of the proclivities in Onion Creek for flooding. We should have worked better to put in preventative measures, better early warning systems, better, better channeling, better, you know, provisions to make sure this, this didn't happen. Also, better development planning down there to make sure that you didn't have too much runoff from impervious cover. And the same thing with the emergency management office. If, there should be more of a proactive predictive, predictive outlook there so that our emergency management personnel stand ready in anticipation of problems instead of waiting for emergency calls to come in.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez.
I live in Onion Creek, so I'm glad to see that there's attention on this issue. In fact, the city council very often can't get it right about what is Onion Creek. The neighborhood's been there since 1973, at least. There's the warning system didn't work that particular night. The 911 responders were overwhelmed in their system, the, the emergency management coordinator we already talked about. The response since, then, has been part of the problem. We had a few city council members and come out, photo op, and left. We have a bridge in the middle of Onion Creek, 1,225 homes roughly, and the bridge was out for over seven months. If that bridge had been in Tarrytown, it would have been out for a month, I guess. It took them five months to decide that they would appropriate some money to build that city bridge back. It wasn't knocked out completely, just the front of it was defaced. It took them about two months once they started. So people had to drive 15 minutes to get from one side to the other during that time. That's the lack of responsiveness you get because it's, the responsiveness of the past city councils has been directly proportional to how far you are from the downtown.
Thank you, sir. That's your time. And in fact, it's all our time as well. That's going to do it for us. Early voting, remember, begins October 20th. Thank you all for coming. Thanks to ACC for hosting us. Thanks very much to Rock and Roll Rentals for providing the audio equipment we all used.
Rock and Roll Rentals.
And for our media partners at KUT, the Austin Chronicle, KXAN, and Univision, I'm Mike Cane with the Austin Monitor. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.